All right. I'll do a one-minute grace period. I'm hoping that we can actually, we scheduled this for an hour and a half, but I'm actually hoping that we are able to finish a little earlier than that, given that we have the long update tomorrow. I think that, you know, a lot of the questions on the operating budget will go to tomorrow. But yeah, I'll call this meeting of the Budget and Finance Committee to order. Ms. Camacho, could you please take the roll call?
Yes, Ms. Allard. Mr. Constant.
Here.
Mr. Dunbar.
Here.
Ms. Kennedy.
Here.
Ms. LaFrance.
Here.
Perez Verdia.
Here.
Oh, wait, that was Mr. Perez Verdia. I believe that was him. Mr. Peterson.
Present.
Ms. Quinn Davidson.
Ms. Quinn Davidson is excused.
Mr. Weddleton.
Here.
And Ms. Zalatell.
Here.
Okay, so I believe we have a quorum. So we will start in our new business and we'll have a report from the Budget Advisory Commission. I understand that Ms. Hobson was unavailable, but Ms. Brawley, will you be giving that presentation?
Yes, I'm here. So yeah, thank you. Just a brief report. So we met in our usual monthly meeting on Thursday, October 7th. We haven't had an overview of the budget yet because of the timing of our meeting and the work session scheduled for tomorrow. So members are aware of that and hopefully we'll be able to tune in. We also have a special meeting scheduled for October 27th, where we will hear our own overview of the budget and then we intend to put together a resolution of recommendations for our November 4th meeting. And I believe those were the updates.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for or comments for the Budget Advisory Commission? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Thank you very much, Anna, and thank you as always to the Commission for being, doing a lot of work and it's all volunteer. So we very much appreciate your advice and feedback. Okay, so moving on, we have just very briefly the quarterly update on pay audits from Mr. Dahl. Mark, are you here?
Yes, I can, and it helps me to take off mute. Finalizing, the third group in APD of 69 employees, we're down to 61 audits complete out of the 69. We pulled data on the next second-to-last group for APD. For 73 employees, we're scheduled, anticipate completing that audit by sometime middle of July. And the first group I mentioned, we will have that audit finalized by 1st of December.
And can you remind me, Mr. Dahl, is it only APD that we are doing this process through or are there other departments as well?
It is all departments, from what I see. What I can do is share my screen and show you the audits that we've completed to date. So at top of the audits completed to date, as you can see, it's many of the major groups currently just happen to be working on APD, which is at the bottom.
And this is APD the final group or is there another group after them?
I believe APD is the final group, but I will confirm that and get back with you.
Great. Any questions for Mark before we move on?
Yeah, I do.
Mr. Constant?
Thank you. Are we anticipating today a report on the status of pay corrections, not just the audit?
I believe that will be through HR, that will not be through payroll. The data is being provided to them and we're just doing the physical audit. I don't, I don't have an understanding of the next step beyond that.
Yeah, so in previous iterations of this report, we would get an ongoing update on pay corrections that are submitted in a monthly basis in the last month or in the last 30 days, whatever it was. And so it'd be really helpful for us to have a sense if the pay corrections have really slowed down to pre-SAP levels and maintained that level or not. So that information would be great. It doesn't matter to me who delivers it. Previously, it was the municipal manager, but that information is still pretty important for us to keep our hands on because of the potential liabilities that come with unmanaged pay corrections.
Okay, yes, we do, we do track those pay corrections and I will, I'm trying to, I believe in the last PBR report, I'm trying to remember which ones, but we are below prior, even prior to SAP with PeopleSoft, we're below the corrections that were required back then. We're in better shape than the Muni has ever been in. So I can provide that detail to you.
That'd be great. See the data and I believe that we finally got through the worst of the SAP and so it is proving its promise. So having the data will be helpful. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Constant. And yeah, we, it's been a number of months since we've had one of those, since we've been asked for, had one of those kind of reports. And I think if the, if the news is good, I think it would be something worth talking about, even if it's not good, but I think it would be worth talking about next month.
No, I, I think we have a good story that Muni as a whole can brag about. So yes, we'll get that information to you.
Thank you, Mark. Not seeing any other questions in the queue. So let's move on. We have Mr. Frisk talking about FEMA reimbursement. And I believe we have a document for this. If Mr. Frisk or Ms. Camacho wants to put it up on the screen.
I, thank you, Chairman Dunbar. I can put it up on the screen if you don't mind. I just want to identify that I also have in the office with me Ross Rizvold from Public Finance, as well as Dan Moore from Treasury. So just so everybody's aware, I am going to go ahead and turn our camera off for bandwidth capability, if that's okay.
Yep.
All right, so give me just 30 seconds here and let's start with this document right here. Let me know if, if you can see it real quick, Mr. Dunbar. That would be appreciated.
If I can see it.
Yep, okay, so I am going to start by making a, just a statement, if you don't mind. My job as the CFO is to safeguard the financial capabilities of the municipality. And it would be, I would be remiss in my job if I didn't ring the bell if I thought we were headed towards a potential issue or in, already in a potential issue. So that is why you are going to get this briefing. I tried to put this on the last meeting. I know we got busy and everything and we never got to, but it is a major issue that we need to discuss. So my data is now as of 9:30, where my previous data was as of August 31st. After being in the job for approximately six weeks, I basically came to the conclusion that we were utilizing interfund loans to finance the earthquake and COVID response. And in doing so, we were potentially creating an issue for ourselves on a couple different fronts, one of which was our funded balance was being depleted because of the interfund loans, as well as a potential liquidity issue that may be a result of this activity as well. So as I got more and more into it, I decided to, we need to talk about interfund loans and FEMA reimbursement first and foremost, and that's what this is going to do today. So as you can see from the screen, we have, as of 9:30, we have enacted 11 interfund loans for both earthquake response and COVID response in the tune of $135 million, okay? I'm going to use round numbers. I'm not going to go 135,164. I'm just going to say 135 million, okay? The first ones we're going to address are the earthquake. As of, as of 9:30, we have $31,500,000 worth of authorized interfund loans. The expenses on that is $19.8 million. It's already been expended, meaning that we have $11.6 million worth of retaining, remaining authorization. I want to caveat that that remaining authorization does not mean that money is available to use, to be used for anything other than earthquake-related responses, okay? I also want to caveat that at this point in time, there is a lag between the expenditures and the remaining authorizations because we haven't received the, we haven't received the invoices for September, okay? The report is as of September 2021, but we still have about a six to eight-week lag between when we get an invoice from vendor and when it's paid, when it's realized, recognized as an actual expenditure and such. So again, these numbers are in flux on a month-by-month basis, okay? So to date through 2020 and 2021, we have received from FEMA a total of $6,435,000 of reimbursements for earthquakes. That's 41 total payments for a total of $6,435,000, okay? We currently have $4 million of claims submitted at this time. It's classified as work in process, but I noted it as submitted, okay? Out of the 106 projects that we had regarding the earthquake, 72 have been completed for a total of $10,435,000. That's 61% of all the expenditures. We've only been reimbursed, like I said, the 6.4 million. At this point, we have the $4 million that is out and we're anticipating getting paid sometime before the end of the year. Again, it's all related to how fast FEMA works. And then with that said, the differential between our overall expenditures, again, 19.84 million and what we think we're going to get paid, which is 10.4 million, we still have 9.3, 9.4 million dollars worth of expenditures that have not been reimbursed. Now, reimbursement from FEMA with respect to earthquake requires that whatever project is being worked on has to be fully completed before we can submit a reimbursement request. So we're at various stages right now of projects that are, you know, either just now starting or in the middle or getting close to the end. So I can't give you a detail of when we expect to get this money. We anticipate that as these projects close in the next year or two, then we will be able to recoup that money as well as any others. We fully anticipate that by, within the next two to three years, we will have expended every bit of our, I'm going to roll back up, every bit of our authorized money and I'll say within three years, we should have all of our money from earthquake recouped at that time, in approximately two to three years from now, okay? Do we have any questions with regard to earthquake before I move on to the 800-pound gorilla in the room?
Yes, we have Ms. LaFrance in the chat. Ms. France?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Frisk, for this presentation. So just, so I'm clear and I'm just going through your report and absorbing and writing down some numbers. When it comes to the earthquake expenditures, the total, it says in the text, is 10.435 million and we have been reimbursed for 6 million out of that 10%, or 10 million? Is that, no?
That is, that, thank you for the question. Ms. LaFrance, you are 100% correct. If you notice that the 10.435, if you were to take this, this number, this 6.4 million and add the 4 million that's been submitted for requested reimbursement, that equals that amount.
Okay, and then up at the top, the expenditures, 19 million. I'm just wanting to reconcile the amounts that we have expended for the earthquake compared to the amount we expect to be reimbursed for. If you could just recap that, those figures for me, thanks.
Thank you again for the question. So I'm going to roll back down here and I address it right here. There are 90 million, $9.4 million of expenses that haven't been submitted because with the earthquake reimbursement, the project has to be completed, fully completed, before you submit for reimbursement. So we have multiple projects. We still have 34 projects ongoing at this time, okay? Only 72 of our original 106 are completed. The 34 remaining projects are in some phase of work, whether it be at the initial phase right now of design and build or if it's actually, we've already demoed the building and now we're starting construction, but we cannot submit the 9.4 million right here until the projects associated with them are completed. Does that make sense?
Yes, understood. And I guess just to put a finer point, we believe we will be reimbursed though for all these expenditures related to the earthquake. Is that correct?
That is my, that is my impression that there's nothing, that there's nothing that's been indicated to me that we wouldn't receive reimbursement. What we have sent in, we have been paid for.
Understood. Thank you so much and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. LaFrance. I see no other questions in the chat regarding earthquake. So if you want to continue, Mr. Frisk?
Thank you. All right, now we're going to go to COVID. So I'm going to scroll down and I'm going to hit you with the very first graph here and it's, I'm going to tell you the, the results first and give you the details second. So we've authorized $103 million worth of interfund loans. As of now, we've extended $85 million of that. We have received $27.4 million of reimbursement. We currently have work in process submitted to FEMA, a total of 18.8 million. But this is the category that I need you guys to really look at and pay attention with me on this because this is the, this is where I, I have my ongoing concern, okay? We have spent 85 million. FEMA has only agreed to pay us 31.8 million, okay? Of that 31.8 million they've agreed to pay us, we've already received 27.4 million of that money back, okay? So if you look at the differential between what they agreed to pay us and what we've been reimbursed, FEMA right now is saying essentially that they only owe us 4.4 million dollars, which is why this last column is why I'm ringing the bell to you guys, is that right now, we don't have a commitment from FEMA in the amount of $53.2 million. And I'm going to stop right there for a second and just ask, does anybody have any questions of how that reads?
Yeah, we have several questions in the chat. We'll start with Mr. Perez Verdia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Understand the language you're, you're using. You said that they have agreed to pay us that amount. What is the amount we have requested for them to pay? Is that, is that the same as the amount that we have expended? Can you describe the process for us in terms of when we spend it and what's that process of requesting reimbursement or payback and where that's at? Thank you.
So the, through the chair, I appreciate the question, Mr. Perez Verdia. The, the process is, is laid out pretty, pretty much by FEMA on, you, you gather your request, you submit it through the state of Alaska, they do their research, their, their checklist, and then they send it off to FEMA. FEMA goes through several different iterations of review and then they will either do one of two things. They'll either deny your request, ask for additional information, or they'll pay for it. And, and in the form of pay for it, they provide you with what's called an OAD. It's an Obligation Award Document. And so you, you get a notification that comes in that says, we've agreed that we're going to pay you X dollars, okay? I think what we should do right here is allow me to pivot for just a second and, and discuss why I think we have an issue with potentially at-risk funds, okay?
So. Sir, before you go on, I just want to make sure I'm, that there's, there's, it feels like that there's a number missing in here for me and I just want to make sure that it's clear. You have total expenditures and you have, you have what they, from your perspective, what they've agreed to pay back. What is the number that we've requested for them to pay, pay back?
We, so far, we have to them $45 million of requests. We have the 27.4 plus the 18.7 that's in progress at this particular point in time.
Okay, so we have, we have requested that, that amount and.
We have requested that amount.
And, and of that amount, we've received 27 million, is that right?
That is correct and they've only agreed to pay us 31.
Okay, so.
So still, we're, to your question, we're still pursuing them to award us an additional $16 million or 14, excuse me, not 16, $14 million in this submitted category at this time, okay? That would, if they bumped that up to 45 million, that would cover these two right here, okay?
We have, we have not requested reimbursement for the full amount that we have expended. Is that correct?
That is correct. We have not fully done that. Now with that, I think that's a perfect segue into what I want to do. I'm going to change real quick. I'm going to bring up a, with the, with the approval of the chair, I'm going to bring up a document from September 30th. It's an email from, specifically from, geez, Deb Vaughn, who's the Program Delivery Manager for FEMA. We requested a meeting with Ms. Vaughn back on the 29th of September because we had an ongoing concern about congregate sheltering being eligible for FEMA reimbursement. And this is exactly what she said as a recap summary to our meeting, is that we, the municipality, created supplemental congregate sheltering locations owing to the reduction of capacity of existing shelters due to state mandated ordinance requiring distance. To validate the need for the congregate sheltering locations after September 15th, 2020, FEMA will need more information in the form of, but not limited to, these six different items, summary of expenses, timelines for opening and closing of shelters, type of people using the facility, congregate sheltering elements are lessens immediate, eliminates or lessens immediate threats to lives, public health or safety and/or lessen the risk of the spread to COVID, copy of requirements for distancing and capacity of existing shelters and alternative sheltering. This is probably the key point that I want to point out right here, the following statement. March 15th, 2020, COVID policy included congregate sheltering, whereas September 15th, 2020, an opening and operating policies did not. While there, while these policies do not specifically mention congregate sheltering, justifying of the use of congregate sheltering will be gathered to help support the claim for it being a necessary action. And, and here's the key word, potentially eligible for FEMA reimbursement through the Public Assistance Program. Again, respectively, Debbie Vaughn, Program Delivery Manager from FEMA. And the reason I bring that up is that we have submitted in that, in this $18 million, we've submitted roughly $7 to $8 million worth of reimbursements requests from, for both congregate and non-congregative sheltering at this time. And we have not received any reimbursement, nor have we received any, let me, let me step that back. We have received $1.9 million of reimbursements between congregate and non-congregative sheltering as of today and we have not been obligated any additional funds for that. So this, this is why I'm sitting here with you guys now telling you, I think we have a problem. No, no, I don't think. I know we have a problem. The problem is, is that we could potentially not be reimbursed for congregate sheltering and we're at the whim of FEMA. And right now, congregate sheltering, if it's declared ineligible from September 15th, 2020, we have 13 months of expenses that we can't get re, we can't get back.
Mr. Frisk, I have a number of people, number of people in the queue for questions and comments. We'll start with Ms. Zalatell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So it'd be really helpful if you could share that FEMA email so we have some time to sit and read it ourselves and digest it a little bit. It was hard to read and then also have you reading it to us at the same time. So if that could be forwarded, that would be really helpful. I really, I feel a little bit like a broken record when I have to say this, but we are not providing congregate sheltering. We are providing mass care. Mass care is in response to COVID and I feel like I need to get it on the record here so that it's very clear that we understand. Mass care is in response to COVID so that we can provide adequate spacing and it is specifically in response to the reduced capacity within our homeless response system, our established shelters, because they also needed to provide adequate spacing and follow the COVID-19 protocols as set by the CDC. I would also say that we need to have a deeper conversation about this because some of the information you are receiving from FEMA doesn't necessarily coincide with the guidance and direction given by HUD. So I think we need to set some time aside to have a work session to really talk together about this. First, we need to start using the term mass care over and over and over again. And that we need to make sure we're acknowledging that the specific reason for obligating the funds for the Sullivan Arena is to keep mass care going because we continue to have a reduction in the established shelter capacity and we continue to be subject to the CDC guidance because COVID is still very real in Anchorage. And I guess I'll leave it at that for now. I do want a work session on this because we have an obligation to care for the people in the Sullivan Arena and in the non-congregate facilities. And we shouldn't, we need to be very mindful that we don't undermine our ability to be FEMA reimbursed by our overall approach to COVID and the way we talk about our COVID response. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Frisk, I have Dean Gates in the queue. Do you want to answer or respond to Ms. Zalatell before we go on, before we bring in the lawyer?
Thank you, Mr. Dunbar. Appreciate that. I, I'm not sure how to respond to Ms. Zalatell's question. I mean, I think it's more of a statement on her behalf that we, she was seeking a work session on this. The only thing I can respond to is that FEMA has made it perfectly clear to us from, again, I've only been here three and a half months, but others have been here longer, that they, they're seeing and they discuss sheltering as congregate and non-congregative. So mass care, I, and, and as far as. So mass care, I and and as far as HUD, I I'm not sure. This is the first time I've heard HUD come into this conversation, so I can't address that. But I I'm just going off of what FEMA has specifically said to us from a congregant and non-congregant sheltering aspect. So if 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 there's something that needs to be done, we can definitely continue to work on that.
Thank you, Mr. Frisk. Mr. Gates, and then we'll go to Ms. LaFrance in the queue. Mr. Gates.
Oh, um, thanks, Mr. Chair. I could wait for the others. I was going to ask about if FEMA doesn't reimburse some money if it's above below the tax cap.
Okay.
And I was going to elaborate a little more on some premises.
Well, well, um, we'll come back to you then, Mr. Gates. I thought it was specifically in response to Mrs. Zalatell's statement. So we'll we'll continue with the members and we'll come back to you. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Ms. LaFrance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Frisk. I was hoping to get some clarification just on some of the language used. For example, the thirty one point eight that FEMA agrees to pay and then other reimbursements that or other costs that are potentially eligible for reimbursement and what they have so far paid. And so I guess my my question is, did and and maybe this needs to happen, as Ms. Zalatell suggested, in a work session where we've had time to review the communications from FEMA is, you know, did they say they wouldn't pay for it? Or just that it's potentially eligible for the, you know, the mass care costs? And then the second question would be, are there other areas of COVID nineteen related expenses that the Muni was intending to get seek reimbursement that we also believe fall into that potentially eligible category? Or is it, again, just the mass care? Thanks.
Mr. Frisk, would you like to respond to that?
Yes, through the chair. Thank you, Ms. LaFrance. So the the big concern for for me right now is on mass care sheltering versus non-sheltering and whether FEMA is going to allow us to have an eligible reimbursement for that. That's the big, big part that concerns me. That's an ongoing concern for me. I I would really love to get something in writing that said they will. But, you know, again, my job is to let you guys know, I think we got a problem here. I know we have, and we're going to have to address it. And what's the best way to do it? So that's why, again, we're back to this report. What what I'd like to do, if I can, is to start rolling forward into the next page, which will also help answer the question that Ms. LaFrance just asked, if that's okay? Or do we have more questions from others that need to be addressed before we move?
Let's see, we have Mr. Constant, Mr. Perez, R D, and Mr. Weddleton in the queue. So let's see if we can get through them and go forward. So, Mr. Constant.
Yeah, sure. So I think this is more of a statement than a question. But when this conversation came up both times at the assembly meeting, there was a proposal to spend funds out of the capital funds that we have set aside for purchase of facilities to actually move people out of the mass shelter so that we can actually get back to regular business. And I just want to put it out there that I, for one, am not going to support in any scenario utilizing those funds to pay off funds that we very likely will be reimbursed for or could tax for if we had to because we can't just generate funds to to purchase and secure and make buildings happen. And so I understand now that it's it's at least one part of the administration's idea to use those funds that are there because they're there. But I'm going to be very hesitant to use those funds for anything other than moving people out of mass shelter into alternative shelters and ideally housing units. And so I just need to make sure that I've stated that really clearly here. I am cognizant of your concern. I'm more optimistic than you probably are about us getting paid back because I've been through the wringer a few times. But I just have a really firm position that I want you to understand that we need those funds available to purchase buildings to move people.
Thank you, Mr. Constant. Mr. Perez, R D.
Miss Chairman Dunbar, can I actually address that real quick to Mr. Constant, please?
Sure.
Ms. Constant, I appreciate your concern. I really do. I think what we need to understand is that with respect to the expenditures for the COVID, that that's an that is basically an operational matter on a day by day basis. And I we, as a municipality, cannot fund that through any kind of borrowing aspect. Whereas if we do an infrastructure program or capital improvement project, we can actually borrow money to build something. So that's that is why you're trying to do it the way we are. We have funds.
I respectfully would offer, though, that it's not simple to borrow money. In order to borrow money for the purchase of buildings, it has to go to the voters, which puts us a year out. And full faith and credit is is essential for us to take a loan to purchase a building. And so it's very complex. And and I understand that there have been lots of promises made about, oh, there's other money we can find. But history tells us that it is, in fact, very challenging to achieve that. And so it's the bird in the hand, two in the bush. I'll take the one we have in the hand. And so what we can do, these funds are authorized under emergency procurements. And so we have means of paying these back if we need to, if FEMA doesn't. These are not the best ways, of course. The best way is for us to unify and challenge DC to do their damn job, which we will do eventually when we finally kind of get through this storm, if you will. But I hear the promise of we can use alternative financing mechanisms. But experience tells us those are very limited and take a lot of time.
Okay, we're gonna, first of all, I want to note that we've been joined by Ms. Allard. And we've still got people in the queues and and we've got more of this presentation, so I'd like to keep moving forward.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Perez, R D.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am trying to reconcile the language that you're you're using. You said, I know we have a problem. And then you read the information that has been provided by FEMA. And my my question is, there's two two short questions. Have we been denied any funding that we've requested at this point? And the second question is, where have you seen explicitly that they have said that they will not reimburse us? So I'm I'm trying to understand how you can know that we have a problem when I don't see anywhere that they have explicitly said they will not reimburse us for these expenditures. So if you could provide clarity on whether we have been denied and where you see explicitly them saying that they will not that they will not reimburse us?
Through through the chair. Thank you, Mr. Perez, R D. The 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 fact that they have specifically and in that email, and I'll I'll forward that as soon as this meeting is over, stated that congregant sheltering was in the original COVID policy. And then in when that changed on September fifteenth, twenty twenty, it was no longer in the policy. That leads me to believe that it's a non-reimbursable event after that date. Okay, we have submitted requests into FEMA for reimbursement on certain things. And we have been denied. I can give you a real quick one story. We submitted a request to have a reimbursement for rental rental toilets, powder potties, whatever you want, rental cans, whatever you want to call them. It was rejected back out by FEMA with the statement that, can you please provide us with the GPS coordinates of where these particular toilets were set up? Okay, again, just it's all in the attention to detail and it's got and it's just going to be. It's going to be tough. Okay, and again, it's going to be a time. It's not going to happen overnight. We're not going to get reimbursed in the next year for these expenses. I've been I'm looking at this as this could potentially drag on for two to three years down the road or maybe even longer. Okay, which, again, comes back to, we've already expended money. And we have, you know, right now fifty million dollars sitting there that we have no source of getting it back. We have to work within FEMA's guidelines and their policies and at their whim. So again, my my job is just to let you know, I believe we have, and I believe we have a problem. And I'm a conservative guy. That's my job. So I'm just ringing the bell for you guys, saying, we really need to look at this.
Yeah, well, thank you. And Mr. Chair, this is just a short comment. I I appreciate that. I I have a CFO that that I work with in the job that I have. And and I appreciate, you know, your 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 conservatism and your and your and ringing the bell. I just want to make sure that it's a realistic threat and that and that, you know, and that we're balancing both, you know, smartness, decision making and potential challenges. And so I I I just, based on what you've shared with me so far, I I don't see any sort of verification that we will not receive the reimbursement. I see a threat in terms of it taking longer. And I see that it's going to take a lot more work to be able to provide the information that they they need in order for us to get it. But I'm not I'm not seeing the same level of threat that you are in terms of it being denied and us being out tens of millions of dollars. So that's that's just my my observation. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Weddleton.
Oh, thanks. Maybe beating the same issue, you know, I I just wonder with FEMA if no means no, you know, if they looked at things and did they say, no, we won't reimburse certain things? Or have they just not gotten to it yet? And and kind of going into that email to the extent I saw there was a list of things that we'd have to discuss to get reimbursement for the mass care or congress shelter. And it looked like we could answer all those very honestly and and qualify. I mean, there wasn't anything challenging there. I mean, we clearly have plenty of COVID if we're leading the nation in case rates. And and then, you know, the traditional shelters have maintained their low occupancy, I mean, all those things that are actually. I think Meg could probably write an essay off the top of her head on those. So I you just wonder, I mean, is it, I guess, what Cameron was saying, is it realistic that we won't get reimbursed? And then one other point is, I think, when Mr. Constant talked about you know, accessing the money that potentially for buildings, i- is there, does the does FEMA care where we get the money from? I mean, were we to use the the funds that we've kind of in our heads set aside for these buildings to pay for mass care? Would they then not reimburse us because that source of funds?
Mr. Frisk, can you answer that question?
I would like to research that and get back to the group. But my first initial comment is that it it doesn't matter where the money comes from. As far as it's an expense, you have to, you have to spend a dollar and submit a request for reimbursement. So at this point, I do not believe that FEMA would care that we took money out of a capital improvement project fund. But I'll double check with our municipal advisors and get back as a group.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weddleton. Mr., let's see here, where are we at? Mr. Gates?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Chair. So I just wanted to ask if some of my understanding premises were correct in terms of the money here that you listed, if this is all under emergency ordinances approved by emergency ordinances, the interfund loans and whatever other sources. And I think that's important because my premise is if it's by emergency ordinance, then whatever's not reimbursed by FEMA, we may be accrued from the taxpayers and above the tax cap. And I guess that would happen at the end after we get a clear denial. But if they were not from an emergency ordinances, then we have to, whatever's not reimbursed from FEMA, then we need to find some other way to cover that interfund loan cost, right? And I just wondered if you've broken, if if there are these two different approvals, emergency ordinance and regular A O, if they are both two different ways that they were authorized, if you've broken out the numbers in terms of what's under charge.
Mr. Frisk, can you answer that question?
Yes, I was waiting for your cue. Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Gates, we have segregated out the emergency orders away from the A Os that we have issued at this point in time for our foreign accounting purposes exactly for that, which is to with the premises that the because it was an E O, we could go above the tax cap as far as adding on for anything that FEMA wasn't reimbursing us for. I do want to, I do want to, at this point, though, point out that, per my discussions with our municipal advisor, my question was specifically to them, since they've dealt with this in many other parts of the country and we're kind of new to the game when it comes to FEMA reimbursement of this nature. I asked the question that if we were to, for example, if we thought we were in a liquidity issue and we needed to get money back, could we tax the the property owners under that E O and still request reimbursement from FEMA? And the answer was no. If we go to the people and tax them for whatever, whatever we think may not be reimbursable by FEMA, we can no longer pursue FEMA reimbursement for that amount of money. So just want to put it out there. I did ask the question, and that was the answer that came back from our municipal advisors.
Thanks. The quick follow up. So is the potentially at risk amount fifty three million in your table? Is that all under emergency ordinances?
So let's let's, let me roll down here. Pretty much, yes. As you can see from this particular table right here, this is how much we've expended per the A O E O and what's remaining. Again, reminding everybody that there's a lag between the actual authorization, remaining authorization and expenditure due to invoicing from the vendors. So as of as of twenty twenty one, this is what where we're at. But we and this all, all this money is basically spent at this particular point in time. It's just a matter of getting the invoices and recognizing as an actual expenditure and SAB.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Frisk.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Gates. We have Ms. Allard and Ms. LaFrance in the queue. Ms. Zalatell also would like the the last series of statements you made, Mr. Frisk, about, I I guess, the distinction between E Os and A Os. If you could provide that in an email to us or forward on whatever advice you've received on it, I think we'd appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, I can I can answer that question. That was on a conference call that I had with them within the last forty eight hours. So I will ask for something in writing from them to support what I just commented on.
Perfect. Thank you. Ms. Allard, you're in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just I have some information here about in regards to FEMA and maybe Travis could confirm or or what. So I was told very specifically that FEMA can't necessarily make a decision right now. And the reason why is because they don't have the contracts, the invoices and other federal declaration, the COVID declaration in their hands. So they can't do an adequate review. Because what they told me was that FEMA needs to demonstrate why the congregant sheltering was and is needed to mitigate the spread of COVID and whatever else demonstrates the costs are eligible or not. So I guess the bottom line is that when you're, when we are using FEMA and we want to be guaranteed they're going to reimburse until they actually get all that information in hand, then we have to basically prove why we sheltered people eighteen months instead of saying, oh, okay, there's not, did we shelter them and if there's going to be a difference of opinions? But did we shelter individuals in the homeless facility because there was nowhere else to put them? Did was the emergency over a year? Did, was the emergency over a year into it? And could we move them back into Beans Cafe and other areas? Because what it's going to look like is that we, because we couldn't agree as a community or administration and as in a body of where we wanted to continue to house the homeless individuals, we have to be super careful. And what I mean by that is we, some of us wanted to put them in the Alaska Club, our homeless neighbors, and others didn't. And so did we keep them inside of the Sullivan Arena? Because it was actually COVID related and this could be a grand argument. So unless we could validate the actual reasons of why we did it for 18 plus and going on longer, like 19, I could see why we reimbursed some, or 2020, why we were reimbursed FEMA dollars. But I can't see completely justifying for 2021. So whether we get reimbursed or not, those documents have to go forward to FEMA. And from what I understand, they haven't yet. Zero as far as getting reimbursed right now on a level that we expect. So I, I, the person's texting me right now. They're going to determine all of that. So if we don't step on it, move forward and put those documents forward, what we have initially to FEMA, it's going to take longer and longer. Travis, could you tell me if, or us, if the administration has put anything forward since you guys have been in administration?
Through the chair, thank you for the question put forward. I'm, let me make sure I understand that. Have we submitted any requests? Is, are you asking if we've submitted requests for congregate, non-congregant sheltering? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah. Yeah. Basically, all the documentation that we've built contracts, the contract with Sullivan Arena, everything.
So the, so the answer to your question, Ms. Allard, is this, and I apologize, you may, you may not have been on the phone or in the meeting when we originally discussed this. We have submitted between seven and eight million dollars to FEMA for reimbursement for through December of 2020. I gotta be, I'll be brutally honest. I, I would have to go back and ensure that it was for both congregant, non-congregant. At this point, and I don't have that ability because Mr. Thorne is not, he's on leave right now. So I, I won't be able to get to him for a couple of weeks. In the back of my head, it's, he submitted both. And basically, this is a trial run to see if they're going, going to approve anything.
Right. And I was told they could do it in increments. Chair, do you mind if I just do a, a quick follow up comment and that's it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. So I'm speaking to the, the commander of FEMA and he's texted me. He wanted to give me an example, and I think this is something that the body really needs to be aware of because I think it's vital information. He said that ASD just reopened Gruning, which I know, Gruning here in Eagle River, from the earthquake damage in 2018. They haven't received any final reimbursement and it could take some, quite, quite some time. You're talking three years, three years ASD still hasn't received any money coming back from FEMA reimbursement. And he's saying it could take another couple of years. So you are looking at anywhere from three to five years for any final reimbursement of anything from FEMA. And so I just would like the body to be keenly aware. If this in any way isn't done very specifically, that it was absolutely 100% related to COVID and there was no other type of, well, yeah, it's an emergency, but we don't have anywhere else to put these individuals and our, our homeless neighbors. We're just going to house them here right now. We're not going to get reimbursed. We will absolutely not get reimbursed. And what we do get reimbursed for could take up to three to five years. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Allard. Ms. LaFrance, you had a quick follow up from your original question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know Mr. Frisk had mentioned he'd come back to my question later and it's fine. I think that Mr. Weddleton and Mr. Perez Verdia asked them very clearly just about in terms of, you know, what's been denied, whether that's in advance or what, and what's remaining in terms of potentially eligible. And I think it's good that we come back to this in a later meeting. And I just wanted to emphasize what Ms. Zalatell's request about getting the advice or guidance in email or writing, whether it's from the municipal advisors or FEMA or whoever else, so that we can all be on the same page with the information that we're starting from as we talk more about the FEMA reimbursements. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. LaFrance. Do you have any response to that, Mr. Frisk, before we go on to the next person?
Through the chair, Ms. LaFrance, I, I will follow up as I indicated and, and get information for you guys.
Great. Mr. Constance.
Thank you. I, I'm also very interested in that spreadsheet of AO versus EO funding over this total pool of money that we were looking at, 103 million dollars. And I am wondering, and this is probably a question for legal. If we did appropriate and fund through an AO, can we do a subsequent EO? Once we have all of the final billings, all of the final rejections from FEMA saying, no, this we're not going to cover? If we have the authority to do that, Travis, I don't need an answer to that right now. It's just something that we should be investigating from a tactical perspective. Because I anticipate there will be some expenses that in the end FEMA won't cover. I don't imagine it will be, you know, a vast sum because we'll do our job to advocate and we'll do it effectively. But the difference, that's the question I would have.
Through the chair to Mr. Constance, I, I appreciate the question. It, it's more of a legal question than it is a CFO question. So I appreciate that. We, we will discuss that with legal.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frisk. So that, that's it for the queue. I have a question, but I'll wait till the end if you want to finish your presentation.
Yeah, I, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through this fairly rapidly because I, I think we've kind of addressed everything. So the, here's the reimbursements that we received so far. Here's what's in the work and process and submitted for reimbursement request. It is imperative that you understand that our COVID responses and four distinct projects, sheltering, testing, vaccination and employee screening. Okay, so we have these four projects. So the first one is the sheltering. This is the amounts at this point in time. We've submitted 13.8 million. And when I say sheltering, that's, sheltering is not only the facility, but it's also all the ancillary businesses that go with it, whether they be security, medical, porta potties and so on and so forth. Okay, it's not just for the Aviator Hotel or whatever. So this number is, we've submitted 13.8 million. We've been reimbursed 3.9 million and we have 9.8 million, roughly 9.9 that's in the works. Again, FEMA has only obligated us 4.5 million in this project at this time. This, I think, answers the question that Mrs. LaFrance was asking, which was, are we getting reimbursed on something else? This is testing. Testing has been pretty consistent with being reimbursed. And we've actually taken steps to expedite the process. So now testing, between the time we get the expenditure, we'll put it together and we'll submit it. And we've been getting reimbursed in a 90 to 120 day timeframe. So it, it basically in a three to four month timeframe. We've, we expended 28.7 million. We've been reimbursed 20, 23.5. FEMA is obligated 26.3. As we continue to request reimbursement for testing, the commitment, the obligated amount from FEMA does go up. Okay, they have been raising that bar as we've gone along. So I, I'm not concerned so much about this 5.2 million dollars. I'm, I'm confident that we're going to get this back. Okay? This is vaccinations. FEMA has not obligated or nor committed any funds to vaccination reimbursement. This is an ongoing concern. We are continuing to work it through it. I can't actually address what the hang up is on this. It's 2.6 million at this point. The last piece is the employee screening, which was a one-off for AWW and Solid Waste Services. We spent almost a million dollars in employee screening to allow these employees to come in to work on a day-to-day basis. We just signed the obligation award letter from FEMA today for this 959,000. So we will get this money back. It's just a matter of, it'll probably take another 60 to 90 days before we see it. But we are going to get reimbursed for this expense. And that's pretty much where I'm at, at this point. That's the end of my presentation. Again, Mr. Chair, I believe you had, said you had a question for me. If anybody else does, I'm willing to answer as well.
Great. I do. So I, I have some questions on this as well. And I, I do think that a, a work session on this topic might be worthwhile next week. But that's the Assembly Chair's prerogative or whatever week she chooses. I'll say, you know, in the, the last couple of times it's come up at the Assembly, the administration has made this argument about, you know, we, we don't have funds to draw upon in this interfund loan process. And that's, to me, seems like a different argument to what you're, the argument you're making today. The argument you're making today is these funds might not get reimbursed by FEMA for whatever reason. Although it looks like about 80% of the funds we haven't actually asked for yet, 40 million of the 50, 50 odd million. But my question is about the interfund loan process and what we're drawing upon. How much do we have in the funds or funds that we are drawing upon for that interfund loan process? Or is that not even the right way to think about it? Is it a sort of a borrowing mechanism where we're not even taking from our own funds? So those are sort of my two distinct questions. How much do we have in the funds that we are borrowing from, all told? Or is that not the right way to conceptualize the interfund loan process?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Chair. So to, to answer the, answer the question, the municipal cash pool is where all the money from the municipality is, is being housed. Okay, so that's everybody's money. That's, but when we start doing interfund loans, we're borrowing from one of the five majors, which is the area wide. Okay? So when we're hitting that specific fund, it may or may not have a positive position in the municipal cash pool. Okay? So I, I'll just, I'll throw two numbers off the top of my head for you. In 2019, the equity position for the municipal cash pool in the area wide fund was 65 million dollars. In the end of 2020, it was 4 million dollars. It was spent down 61 million. In that same timeframe, we have a unallocated fund deficit in 2020 of all funds in the amount of 23 million dollars. That's in our, that's reported in our 2020 financials, which are online. So it, it, you, you have a couple, you have a perfect storm here. You have a situation where you're, you're, you're borrowing, you're borrowing against the money in the municipal cash pool, which is therefore bringing down the equity position of the general fund to a, to a lower number. Okay, a significantly lower number. And if we continue to do that, we could potentially put it in the negative and we're going to actually have to start borrowing money from one of the other area funds, whether it be police, fire and so on. Okay? We have a mechanism in which if one fund is overspent, they technically borrow money from one of the other funds. Okay? So we just need to be conscious that when we're doing something in the area wide fund, it, it does have an overall resonating impact to all of the equity owners of the municipal cash pool.
So a follow up then, how much at present is in the municipal cash pool?
Well, I'm gonna, real quick, I'm gonna defer to Ross Rizwald, the public finance, who's sitting here with me. We just went through this and Ross, I apologize. Off the top of my head, I can't get the number.
Yeah. There's, Mr. Chair, you're asking about how much is in the municipal cash pool that belongs to general government?
Or? Yeah. If, if that is, if that is the only thing we can borrow from, in, from, in this interloan process. If it's not, and there's another pool that we can, another portion of the pool that we can borrow from, I, I'm curious about that too. But what, what, what are the funds from, what is, what's the total amount in all the funds from which we can borrow in this interfund process?
You know, the, the best thing for us to do, Mr. Chair, is to, is to take this separately and, and get back to you perhaps later today or tomorrow. And we can give you a little overview of what we've done with interfund loans, not just for COVID, but for other things as well. Because we have used the interfund loan borrowing process for, for some other, other items pre-COVID that were from other, not, other funds, not the general fund. And so seeing it all in one picture, the whole thing, like that one spreadsheet that's monitored by the Controllers Division, that, that would be helpful. So we can show you that as well as what opportunity there, that might remain for borrowing from the cash pool.
Great. I, I think that is a, to me at least, that is a key sort of missing piece of data. We, we've now twice been through this argument at the Assembly about, you know, depleting the capital budget for those buildings versus using the interfund loan. And we still haven't gotten really an answer of how much is there available to borrow. So if you could put that in an email as you described and send it to the Assembly, that would be very helpful to me.
Yeah, I'll put that, Mr. Chair, I'll put that in my court, Travis, and we'll regroup later on about that.
Now I have two more people in the queue, Ms. Kennedy and then Mr. Weddleton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I, I don't know that I have any questions at this point. I've talked quite a bit with Mr. Frisk about this, but I'm really glad that we're on this topic of interfund loan because I really do think there's been a misconception about what that is. It is, it is not an account. It is a accounting process. And so I appreciate the questions that you, Mr. Dunbar, were, were asking and how you were phrasing that. I do think we probably need more of a education, so to speak, on, on what the processes really are, how they, how they function. But I guess I will state it in, in the form of a question that either Mr. Griswold or Mr. Frisk can answer. And that is in regard to the idea of the municipal cash pool. My understanding is that is funds that are basically staying in liquid form so that the municipality can pay its day-to-day expenses. I mean, that means this month's payroll or this week's payroll. It means whatever contracts come in that need to be paid for. And whatever bills the municipality actually has to pay on a daily basis. So the idea is that that cash pool stays liquid. So, but it's not really extra, it's not money just sitting there available. It's really already accounted for and allocated per the budget that we have actually approved. So can, and if you want to wait on this and have a bigger conversation, I'm fine with that, Mr. Chair. But I just absolutely believe that there's been a misunderstanding in terms of what the cash pool actually, what it exists for and what it is actually used for versus the idea that, well, it's this, if there's extra money there, we can use for additional things outside of the budget. And I just don't believe that that's actually a true concept. So, Mr. Frisk, if you want to jump on that, fine. Mr. Dunbar, if you want us to wait till a bigger conversation, I'm happy with that too. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we are running, thank you, Ms. Kennedy. I think we're running a little low on time. And my understanding is, Mr. Rizwald, that would be sort of, hopefully that, that written document that you sent to us would address my concerns and Ms. Kennedy's. Is that possible?
Yeah, Mr. Dunbar, that, that's possible. We'll, we'll give you an initial response for both of those comments from Ms. Kennedy as well as yourself.
Great. If that's okay with you, Ms. Kennedy, we'll move on to the next person in the queue. If that's okay with you, Ms. Kennedy, we'll move on to the next person in the queue.
That is okay. If I can just make one statement, I don't know if anybody's had the opportunity to actually look at the, the comprehensive annual financial report. I mean, if anybody has taken the opportunity to look at that, there's some very telling things in there, including a statement that says that we actually had a deficit of revenues over expenditures last year of about sixty eight million dollars. So there are some things that I think we need to keep in perspective as we start to deal with really what, what the financial situation is and that the things that we need to be aware of and cautious about. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Mr. Weddleton?
Well, thanks. I think we're probably closing this. I didn't really have a question. But I'm sure with Mr. Frisk knows it. I think we all really appreciate you providing this information and ringing the bell, as you said. We obviously have lots of thoughts and challenges to it, but I don't want to dissuade you ever from ringing that bell. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Weddleton. Mr. Constant?
Thank you. And I also want to add to the report that we're asking from our finance folks because I believe it's a distraction to talk about the cash pool. I don't think we've been talking about the cash pool. I think we've been talking about what's commonly known as the ten and two reserve. And so I want to make sure that we are talking apples to apples. And so I want to see if we're spending out of that reserve that is the actual emergency fund, the ten percent and two percent. And so please add that into the mix of whatever report is coming our way so that we're not just seeing a partial picture, we're seeing the full picture. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Constant. And it was my perhaps mistaken belief that the ten and two was included in the cash pool. But if that's not the case, then, Mr. Rizwald, it would be great to, to note that and to address Mr. Constant's concerns as well.
Yeah, we'll note something about the ten and two as well, Mr. Dunbar.
Thank you, and thank you for raising that, Mr. Constant. I think that will conclude our FEMA discussion for now. And we have some, we have a few other things on the agenda. We have about seven minutes left. I guess I would ask for a motion to extend by ten minutes if my colleagues would entertain that.
So moved.
So moved.
Great, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before we, this is Travis again. Before we move on, could we, if we're trying to do a work session, can we please wait until Mr. Thurn is back from his leave? He is a subject matter expert here, so I would appreciate that we have him in the room and we have these discussions.
Madam Chair, is that something you, you have thoughts on?
I don't off the top of my head, but definitely we want to find a time where we can get the people who need to be in the room or on teams, on team. So, yeah, we can talk about that offline.
Yeah, so, Mr. Frisk, I would ask that you speak with the Chair, as she's the one that sets work session timing.
Thank you, I'll follow up with Ms. LaFrance then, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Altal, you got in the queue?
I did. I want to be cognizant of the request for the work session and the fact that we hopefully have a mask care item coming before us on next Wednesday because mask care is not funded through the thirty first. So if we're going to get into some of the intricacies around FEMA for that particular item, we need to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Altal. So moving forward, and again, we'll probably have to go through these pretty quickly. Next up, we have a update on the, oh, no, I guess we have the revenue report from Mr. Moore, who I remember was in the room. The video is off. Mr. Moore, are you still there?
I'm still here, I'm with Travis and Ross.
Do you want, could you knock this out pretty quickly? And of course, these documents are all on, on the website, but.
I can be very quick, I'll just, one or two minutes and I'll be done.
Okay, great.
Okay, I don't know if anyone can display the document or not. I don't, I don't have access right where I'm sitting, so.
Ms. Camacho, could you do the revenue report up on the screen?
Yes, one second.
Is this it, Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I can actually put it up real quick.
Okay, please do so.
Okay, give me just thirty seconds here, let me pop that. Nope. Dan, I believe this is it.
That is.
Yeah, this is it.
Okay, so, Mr. Chair, can the Assembly see that, what Travis is showing?
Yeah, it was included on an email from, from Ms. Camacho as well.
Okay, great. I'll only say three or four points because I know you're very short on time. The very first item there is the PFD. And we have received our first batch of money, which is usually the largest batch, it's eighty five to ninety percent of all PFD. That was received just about a week ago, it was three point three million dollars. So based on historical standards, we could get as much as three point nine million dollars from PFD garnishment. It's still, it's always hard to predict, but that's, that's about the top end of what we think we will get this year. And it's very close to budget, it's not too far off. So that was one, one highlight that is new, new information to us. The other thing I'll mention is, and this is on the third page, top of the third page, we talk about room tax, and this is the very top of the third page. And it, it basically, in the far right column, it just points out that we heard back from the top seventeen hotels in Anchorage about how the month of August went. It's a quarterly filing, this room tax. And so normally, we don't really know the full information until the filing occurs. We do know from August that August was stronger than July, and both July and August were stronger than the second quarter in terms of their growth. So it is looking quite positive, and we think room tax is likely to come in at least two million dollars over budget. The same type of number is also applicable to rental vehicle tax. So I just want to point that out, those numbers are looking quite strong for the summer season. The only other highlights I was going to provide is on, I think it's the next page, there's a column called APD counter fines. Yeah, it's right there. And this one is coming in particularly strong. It's at a hundred and eleven percent of what was budgeted, and there's still several months left in the year. This is definitely a reflection of increased enforcement, traffic enforcement funded by grants. And that's, I just want to point that out, that that's, that's, this is a particularly strong year in terms of the enforcement and the amount of grants available. Okay, the last highlight I have is on the very last page, and this is something the Assembly Committee had asked the last meeting, kind of an overall number. And so what I did is, all the, all the major revenues that have been highlighted above this shaded area, I added all those up in terms of what is budgeted for those, those lines, and then what we're projecting. And that's where you see the seven hundred and forty seven point four million is budgeted, seven hundred and forty eight point eight is projected. The difference is one point four million dollars of positive revenue surplus. So I'm talking about revenues, not expenses, just revenue surplus. And we would say plus or minus five hundred thousand dollars. So that's, that's about as good of a, of a projection and a range as we can provide at this point in time. The only thing that that we don't know and we won't know until March of next year is whatever year end adjustments the Controller Division makes for the two thousand and twenty one annual financial statement. And they have to adjust the, what they call deferred revenue for property taxes. Last year, that, that adjustment was fairly negative number. Typically, the following year turns out to be positive. So, so we think we're in good position to end up positive for the year two thousand and twenty one with respect to budgeted revenues versus projected. The last thing I'll mention in on the very tail end of this page is alcohol tax. It's the very last one, and this is on your agenda. We are, we're still tracking very well with alcohol tax. We have seven months of filings. We're at a hundred and ten percent of what we thought, where we thought we'd be at this point in the year. And that equates to about one million dollars of positive revenue variance for alcohol tax, which is a separate fund that is dedicated, as you all know. So that's, those are my highlights, and if there's any questions, I can take them. But I, hopefully I kept that short for you.
Great. I don't have anybody else in the queue. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Moore? All right, I'm not seeing any. Thank you very much for that succinct yet informative presentation, Mr. Moore. Now, we will move on to a discussion of the, so if you look, we have D and E. E is the two thousand and twenty one and two thousand and twenty two budget, including budget to actuals. The two thousand and twenty two budget, I would, I would, I would say we should, we should talk about tomorrow during our five hour work session. But before that, we, we had asked, and some, some members had asked for a more detailed presentation on the alcohol tax, both revenues collected and trying to find out where all the expenses had gone and what had actually been paid out. This was Mr. Reskowitz. I didn't see him in that room, but is he available?
I think Marilyn Bonzoff from OMB is actually on for us.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Namboski. I'm sorry, Marilyn, what was, what was the last name? Can hear.
Bonzoff. She's the Deputy Director of OMB.
Great. Ma'am, are you available to speak to this point?
Hi, Mr. Chair, this is Marilyn Bonzoff. I am actually not prepared at this time, so we'll expect to have that tomorrow.
Okay. Right, so, so I take it there'll be a presentation on Appendix R during tomorrow's work session on the operating budget?
Yes.
And as part of that, I, I think one of the things that people really have asked for at the last meeting, and we received emails about, was not just what's planned for two thousand and twenty two, but also actually showing which, which programs were paid out and how much. Is that something you can, in two thousand and twenty one, I mean, is that something you can do tomorrow?
I do believe yes.
Okay, do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments on that? Okay, I'm not seeing anything. Let's see here. Okay, so we will expect to have a more detailed alcohol tax presentation tomorrow regarding Appendix R. So, Ms. Bonzoff, are you able to talk at all about budget to actuals, monthly budget to actuals?
I am.
We only have about eight minutes left. Yeah, is there some, is there something you could do briefly that you think would be worthwhile?
I, I hope it will be worthwhile. I will report that the, we did submit the August budget to actuals on the October twelfth Assembly Meeting. And we are working on the budget to actuals through September thirtieth. That is the third quarter report, which will include utilities and enterprise departments. The, what I'll just note at this time, if that's okay, just the, there are just three departments that are showing through September as overspent through proportionate of the year, which is seventy four percent through the year for September. They are two of them that have been trending high throughout the year, which one is economic and community development. It's at eighty four percent, but that's primarily because of the spend on the COVID programs. The other one that has been trending higher throughout time is real estate, and that is just due to the posting of contractual expenses. The third department that's currently showing as proportionally overspent through the year is, hadn't been on the August report, but is now on the September report, and it's maintenance and operations. And that's just due to the larger maintenance activities coming in at the end of the summer construction season. And so we expect that to actually slow down by the end of the year.
Thank you, Ms. Bonzoff. So we've obviously discussed AFD and APD over time a number of times here. But those weren't one of the three departments that were seen as running hot. So are those, those overages not large enough to put them into this category? Or is there some other reason?
For the overall departmental spend, that is correct. They are, Fire, as of September thirty report, being seventy four percent through the year, they're spent seventy four point nine percent. Police is spent seventy two percent through September. And that's overall actuals against the budget.
Very good. Does anyone have any questions regarding the budget to actuals? Okay, great, thank you, Ms. Bonzoff. That was very informative in a very brief amount of time.
Thank you.
Let's see here. So I think now we will move on to, if anyone has any other business or legislative priorities, they want to put it in the, in the chat, or if they want to discuss it, otherwise we'll move on to audience participation. We have five minutes for that. Okay, I'm not seeing anything in the chat. So, audience participation. Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak?
Yes.
Sorry, Desiree, can you sort of manage who is requesting to speak?
I didn't see who that was, but if you are calling in, you can push star six to unmute yourself and speak.
Hello?
Yes, could you please identify yourself, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this is Rachel Kolberg. I'm keenly interested in the way that the budget seems to be going and the documents that Mr. Griswold and the other gentlemen are going to provide to you. If they wouldn't mind breaking things down, like I know we have the, the large five funds that things for the city get funded through, if they wouldn't mind breaking it down for a dumb marine to itty bitty pebble level on what those mean. And I think it was particularly cogent that you requested, you know, what funds we could use, from what pile to fund the different things. I am also interested in that amount and the things that it could be used for so that we don't overextend ourselves as a city into maybe a myopic view of one particular issue that we're dealing with. And those kinds of things. And Crystal, I hear you, I will be looking at that other document and taking a look at that myself. And, yeah, just like basically where we are on the map for what we can spend, where we can spend it. And I appreciate the discussion around this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak? Participate. Okay, not hearing or seeing anyone, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.